So, welcome everyone. This is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista on April 5th, 2021, 7 o'clock, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Our first order of business is to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and Pam Mortenson has volunteered. Go ahead Pam.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next we'll move on to introductions and roll call. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and council members present this evening, if I say your name, just say here, or I'm here. John Chumperland.
Here.
Pam Mortenson.
Here.
Kathleen Refkin.
Here.
And Ann McGregor.
Here.
And city staff present, our administrator Mike Broney.
I'm here.
Our public works superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
Our chief of police Paul Falls.
Here.
And our community development director David Abel.
I am here.
And our finance director Brian Grimm.
Here.
Our director of administration Ally Paulos.
Here.
And our city clerk Chris Lindquist.
I'm here.
And then we have our engineers with WSB here this evening. We have Allison Fousky.
I'm here.
And Adam Gepro.
Here.
And our attorney Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven.
Here.
Alright, that's everyone I believe. So we'll move on to approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or changes you wish to make? Otherwise, if not, then we can approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
This is Pam, so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
Ms. Refkin beat you to it. So, we have Pam Mortenson made the motion, Kathleen Refkin seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye. I vote aye Lisa. Ann McGregor.
Aye.
And Kathleen Refkin.
Aye.
Pam Mortenson.
Aye.
And John Chumperland.
Aye.
So, great. Mr. Broney, do we have any persons to be heard?
Mayor, I did not receive any emails by the noon deadline, but I do, don't recognize one name, and not sure if that person is here for persons to be heard or not. So, I guess you may want to just say if anybody's interested in, and then we'll see what we get.
Alright, I think we have one person attending that, Peter Glessing, I think it is. Did you, were you here to address the council on anything, or just to listen in?
Just to listen in, thanks.
Thank you for attending. Alright, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items, and that's approve our work session meeting minutes from March 15th, 2021, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from March 15th, 2021, and a resolution to approve our claims, and D is a resolution approved simple subdivision for Woodland Cove LLC, and consenting to partial assignments of the master development agreement to MI Homes and Ganya Homes. Is there a motion, are there any that you need to remove? Okay, hearing none?
No, wait, oh Lisa, I'd like to just take out letter C.
Okay.
For approving claims.
Alright, that, then we remain with consent agenda item A, B, and D. Is there a motion to approve those three consent agenda items?
This is John, so moved.
Thank you. Mr. Chumperland made that motion. Is there a second?
This is the Ann, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. So, motion was made by Mr. Chumperland and seconded by Ms. McGregor. All those in favor will signify with aye. Council member McGregor.
Aye.
Council member Refkin.
Aye.
Council member Mortenson.
Aye.
And council member Chumperland.
Aye.
And I vote aye Lisa Whalen. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Mortenson.
Yes, I just had a real quick question. Under, on page 16, under Kennedy and Graven, oh, way at the very bottom, it says MediaCom Franchise Matters. I'm wondering if these items that are going to be used for internet, or all the research that we're working on right now for broadband and all that, if we should keep track of that separately and identify it as being, you know, COVID relief funds used in this manner? Is that of interest to anybody else?
Well, we can certainly identify it, and, and kind of keep track of them. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
And I think maybe if Brian could just keep track of it, so if it comes up, you know, it would all be handy at our fingertips.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mortenson, yeah, we'd be, at some point in the future, the council wants to know where we're at as far as, you know, dollars we've spent, you know, whether it's Kennedy and Graven, or on MediaCom Franchise Matters. I can always run a report out of our financial system to sort that out and, and report back to the council, so that's not a problem.
Madam Mayor, this is Ron Beatty. I, that's, that's, I specifically opened a separate file for that very purpose, so that those, my billings to that, and that's mainly by votes, are separate from everything else, for the very reason that council member Mortenson articulated.
Good, okay. Pam, any other questions?
That was all that I had.
Alright, are there any other questions regarding claims?
No.
Alright, hearing none then. Is there a motion to approve the claims as presented?
This is Kathleen.
This is Pam.
Okay, Ms. Refkin made that motion, and Ms. Mortenson seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye Lisa Whalen. Ms. Refkin.
Aye.
And Ms. McGregor.
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson.
Aye.
And Mr. Chumperland.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. So, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our business items. Our first item is a public comment for our draft body camera policy. Mr. Falls, Chief Falls, I think that's you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As you're aware, we've taken a number of steps recently towards implementing body worn cameras. As you're aware, our, our current SWAT video systems are, are dated and need to be replaced, and as part of that, we are going to be replacing the squad cameras, and then adding body cameras to that system as well for additional transparency. And so, with that, the legislature has provided a number of guidelines for law enforcement agencies that are implementing body worn camera programs, and so, tonight, this is just one of those steps. And that step is, is that we need to have a process that allows for public comment as part of developing the policy. We do have a copy of the draft camera, or body worn camera policy in your packet, I believe it's on page 50. We also have a copy of the draft policy on the city's website. We posted that there last week with a link, so that the public, if they wish, can make comment and forward it to the email that's provided along with the copy of the draft policy. The other piece that we're allowing for the public to make comment, if they wish, is at tonight's council meeting, and then again, on the next council meeting, which I believe is April 19th. So.
Okay.
I guess we can see if there's anybody that would like to comment tonight. If not, we'll do the same again at the, the next council meeting on April 19th. And then again, like I said, it is posted on the city's website with all the instructions and a link to provide email comments as well.
Thank you, Chief Falls. So, anybody in the audience, I guess it's one individual, would you like to comment on the body camera policy?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Council, any comments or questions of the chief?
This is Ann. I had asked Mike Broney, who gave me a very good satisfactory answer this morning, but I'll ask the question now. So, what makes SWAT different from the rest of the law enforcement officers?
Chief?
Yes, that's a great question, and I'll be happy to answer that. So, essentially, our SWAT team is not a team that is specific to our agency. It's a, it's a multi-jurisdictional team, so much like the Drug Task Force is, is the same. And so, it, it really is much more difficult to decide how and who and when they should utilize the body cameras. So, that, that piece is something that we're still working on. Typically, if an agency has body worn cameras, their staff would wear them, and so that's what we're planning on doing. Fortunately, our Sergeant Pat Cummings is the commander of the SWAT team. He's our sergeant here at Minutrista PD, so I've been working with him on that issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, great question. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Just a financial question, which I think I know the answer to, but Chief Falls, we purchased, we have purchased all this related equipment and are using it, is that correct?
Councilmember Chumperland, we actually have not actually purchased it yet. We are going to purchase it shortly, and those funds are all budgeted. They were budgeted for this year and approved earlier this year, but we have actually not purchased it. Once the policy is, is set, and the public comment period is over, then we will actually place the order. With that said, we have worked with the vendor on deciding, you know, what exactly we need and how to implement that, and made a lot of those tentative arrangements.
So, this is, this is not the 57,000 that we had in the CIP budget for 2021?
Yes, it is. That is exactly what this is. This is just, essentially what happened was, the state statute requires us to allow for public comment on the ordinance, or excuse me, on the policy rather, before we can actually purchase it. So, we, we got quotes, and in order to do that, we wanted to make sure that we were okay to spend that money when the time comes. And so, this is just another step towards that.
Okay, thank you.
Walk.
Alright, great. Anybody else?
Chief Falls, this is Kathleen. Has anyone reached out since it got posted on the website?
No, we have not received any comment whatsoever, which is fairly typical. There's a lot of agencies close to us that are going through the same process. Some have just done it, and some are a little behind us, but most of them received either none or very few comments.
And so, this is Mike Broney. So, I'll just jump in since Kathleen asked that question, which was a very good one. So, one of the things that we could have done but chose not to do was, there's really no set time on how long this public comment period is supposed to last. And so, we did post it, as Chief Falls mentioned, last week, I think Thursday. And then instead of ending our public, public comment period tonight, we decided to extend it till the next council meeting. What we didn't want the public to perceive was that we're trying to rush this through for some reason, because we're not. We want this to be, as he mentioned, fully transparent. So, we're having this meeting tonight, and if somebody would want to come on and talk about this, they could have tonight. We're also leaving that opportunity for them to talk at the next council meeting. We feel like two weeks is not a big deal. So, that's the, the course of action that we chose to do. And again, this is a public comment period, not a public hearing, so there's no set number of days or anything, but we felt like posting it on Thursday and approving it on Monday would give the impression that we're trying to rush something through, and we're not. So, that's why you're seeing this being carried forward another two weeks, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Mr. Broney, that's, that's absolutely correct. And from speaking with a number of other chiefs, it's my understanding that there were very, very few, if any, comments at council meetings. The couple of comments they did receive did come via email. And so, our intention is to leave that posted on the city's website for some time even after the next council meeting, up until we finalize this and actually post it as policy, so.
Chief, if we get emails on it, do you just want us to send it directly to you, or is there someone else?
That, that's a great question. Well, you certainly can do that, absolutely. I've instructed my staff that any emails that come to our main police email, which is the link that people would send them to, that they would forward them to me. So, you can certainly do that. If people inquire, I guess my suggestion would be have them go to the website, and then they can just follow that process all on their own. And the instructions are all there.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, great. Alright, so we don't need to take any action on this tonight. I think it's great that we're going to have it open for another two weeks. And the other thing I, I like too is having it available for comments on the website, so people can go at their own leisure and, and check it out and make comments on their own timeframe. So, that's great. Thank you very much. Alright, with that, we'll move on to our next business item, which is approve plans and specifications and authorize for bid the 2021 MSA Street Improvement Project. I think that's, Allison?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This item is up for your consideration to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids for City Project 01-21, which is the reclamation of Sunnyfield Road west of Langwood, and the mill and overlay of Langwood Drive, resurfacing of the trail along the south side of Sunnyfield Road, and some miscellaneous utility improvements. This item begins on page 62 of your packet this evening. Just a, a couple items, you know, we've talked about this project before, you know, with the duration through the feasibility report, and, and as we've gone through final designs, there, there are a few things that I would like to bring to the council's attention. The first is the addition of curb and gutter, which is proposed to be installed along Sunnyfield Road between Langwood Road and Marina Drive. Curb and gutter, or urbanizing this section of roadway, would be necessary to meet the stated design guidelines due to the vertical curve in the corridor. So, as, as the road dips down, the current, the current curve in that road doesn't meet the stated design standards. So, there's some modifications to the elevation at that location, and if, and adding curb and gutter will bring it into compliance with stated standards. If we were not to add curb and gutter, we certainly did look at that. If it's not added to the roadway at this location, the grading would extend beyond the right of way, and there's a wetland in the area, so that's why curb and gutter is proposed at this location. Another item for the council is to talk about the estimated costs. As noted in the council packet, there's the feasibility estimate and the pre-bid estimate or opinion of probable cost. We've increased some street costs, and relating, that's relating to increasing the elevation of the road at Marina Drive, as I mentioned previously. And then there's also some storm sewer, storm sewer that is necessary to facilitate the drainage due to that adjustment in that section of the corridor. Another item for, that I wanted to bring to the council's attention, is with regards to the width of westbound Sunnyfield Road between County Road 110 and Marina Drive. That, that, that width of the westbound traffic cannot accommodate the on-street parking requirements per state aid. Therefore, a no parking resolution is included in your packet this evening for consideration and action. Another item to mention is striping is proposed with this project. We've, we talked about this with the Halsted Reconstruction Project, and that was omitted from the Halsted Project. This project, we are proposing a double yellow center line and a white fog line, which essentially delineates the, the traveled lane and the shoulder. We are recommending that those be installed, those be striped with this project. They're looking at the, the aerial photos, and there was, there's been a yellow center line, double center line in this corridor. With all the traffic that's through there, we, we feel that's an important delineation, and it's included that in the, in the plans and the bid package. As I mentioned previously, the pre-bid opinion and probable cost is included, and we've taken a look at some of the unit pricing from the local street improvement project and made some adjustments. So, that's another reason why you're seeing some of these, for example, the surface improvements and the drainage improvements increase in costs, just based on particularly some grading and bituminous pricing, as well as there's some drain tile in the project area, which, as we've discussed previously, what we're seeing with some of those, the pipe that requires the resin from some Texas plants, we're seeing some fluctuation in that pricing. So, we're going, we anticipate we'll see some higher costs with that. With this project being mostly street improvements, the utility component, component to the project is limited to storm sewer replacement or installation, and sanitary sewer infle, and infiltration abatement measures. Therefore, we don't anticipate that the scope of the project would limit the number of bidders. We feel that this is a, this is a typical street improvement project, so we don't anticipate that the utility components to this project would steer any potential bidders from this project, just based on the, the scope of the project itself. The, the pre-bid opinion of probable, of project cost, and the feasibility opinion of probable cost are on page 63 of your packet, which outlines the total price, the estimated cost at this time. As you'll note, Schedule A and Schedule B are state aid eligible improvements, so you can use state aid funds for any portion of that project cost. And the current state aid construction fund balance is $748,582.05, which exceeds the estimated amount of state aid eligible cost for this project. So, we have adequate funding in, through state aid for this project, based on what we're seeing, what we anticipate for pricing. Should the council approve the plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids, the bid opening would be Wednesday, May 5th, with the award of contract on May 17th, and the assessment hearing on June 7th. We anticipate that there would be about two months worth of work, and want to provide a little bit of timeframe for the contractor to establish his or her own schedule. Looking to have that work done sometime between June 9th and August 15th of this year. We have been in communication throughout this process with the school district with regards to the timing of the project and the proposed improvements, having those discussions, and we will continue to do so should the project proceed through construction. With that, I don't really have anything else to bring to the council's attention, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Fousky. Council, any questions? I'll start with John.
None, no. I had asked for some information earlier today. Allison, her, was supplied, so, through Brian, so I've had my questions answered.
Okay, and Ms. McGregor?
I have a general question. I was going through all the diagrams, and of course, some of my background, so it's, it's interesting in many ways, but I have no idea to, I have no way of knowing whether it's correct. So, a question came up. When you finish all these diagrams, do you have an internal committee that reviews the diagrams to make sure all the numbers and everything are correct?
That's an excellent question. Madam Mayor, Councilmember McGregor, we certainly do have multiple people look through this. So, we have the, the project manager on this project is Tim Hanson, so he's, he directs the, the design team. We have an engineer that goes and prepares the plans, and so once she's prepared, in this instance, she prepared the plans. Tim provided a review, I provided a review. We have our construction services group take a look at it. In this instance, there wasn't a lot of utility work, so we weren't anticipating a, a significant amount of time on that. But they take a look at that for constructability, to, to look at it through that lens, to see if there's anything in the plan set or specifications that, that they think would be a challenge with a contractor, and make sure we iron out as many of those details in advance of bidding the project. And then we certainly go through it with the city as well, to make sure that we've addressed all of the needs and that we're in line with what Superintendent Peters is looking for as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? Kathleen?
No, I don't have any questions.
Alright, and Pam?
I don't have any questions either.
Alright, okay. Since there are no more questions, then are, is there a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the, for the bid of our 2021 MSA Street Improvement Project?
This is Pam, so moved.
Okay, thank you Pam. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. So, Ms. Mortenson made that motion, and Mr. Chumperland seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Mr. Chumperland?
Aye.
And I vote aye Lisa Whalen. Motion passes 5-0. And next, we have the resolution to approve the parking ban on a portion of Sunnyfield Road. Ms. Fousky, any comments there?
No, Madam Mayor, as, as I explained earlier, the reasoning for the no parking resolution is due to the, the width of the street within that section for the westbound traffic. And in order to meet state aid requirements for this road, we are recommending that the council pass the no parking resolution.
Alright, thank you. Council, any questions? If not, there can be a motion to approve the parking ban on a portion of Sunnyfield Road.
Okay, hold on. This is Ann.
Okay.
I'm not against it, but a question came to mind. So, I've never been to an event there, a large event. Is there plenty of parking? Because, again, it sounds like for safety reasons, you definitely want to do what you're proposing, but are people going to try to get around it because they need parking?
Well, Ms. Fousky, maybe you can answer that a little bit. We've been in discussions with the school district, and parking has been an issue, or, and so, what, what has happened in the past, it would be on the north side between Marina and the school, so it'd be west of Marina on the north side. They have used that area for parking. I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fousky, but I don't think they currently use the section between Marina and 110. I don't know that they use that for parking right now. Do you know, Allison?
Madam Mayor, I, I concur. I, I don't recall any discussions about folks using that section. You are getting close to that County Road 110 intersection, which people tend to shy away from on-street parking. I know in the past, there's been issues with folks parking on Marina Drive. To my knowledge, that issue has been resolved, and certainly the installation, the school district's installation of additional parking on their site on the north side of Sunnyfield Road has, has, to my knowledge, alleviated a lot of the on-street parking demand as well. So, I believe that any, to my knowledge, any on-street parking demand exists to the west of Marina Drive.
Okay.
Alright.
Madam Mayor, I can clarify that if you would like.
Sure. Go ahead, Chief.
Allison is correct. There is currently no parking on Sunnyfield to the east of Marina Drive. So, the section they're referring to, now you're allowed to park on the north side of Sunnyfield currently, between Marina and the high school during after-school hours only. However, that was established prior to the school adding additional parking. So, I think we'll be just fine with this, this new plan, since they've added additional parking.
Good, thank you. Alright, any other questions regarding the parking? Alright, then do we have a motion to approve the parking ban on a portion of Sunnyfield Road as presented?
Kathleen, so motion.
Thank you Kathleen. Is there a second?
This is Ann.
This is Pam.
Okay, I think Pam beat you to it, Ann. So, Pam seconded that motion, so all those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye Lisa Whalen. Pam Mortenson?
Aye.
Aye.
John Chumperlin?
Aye.
Kathleen Refkin?
Aye.
And Ann McGregor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five oh. So next we'll move on to approve the plans and specifications and authorize for bid the twenty-twenty-one local street improvement projects. Just for clarification, I do believe the, um, advertisement for the bids, that went out on the third of April. Is that correct, Allison?
Yes, that is correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just want to make that, um, clarification because, um, it, it was, it sounds a little confusing. So the bids actually were advertised on April, um, at, for the April third, um, publication of the local paper. And so now we're approving the plans and specifications. And this is based on our conversation from our special meeting of March twenty-fifth. So now I'm going to hand it over to Adam Gebbois. Mr. Gebbois?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so this is based on our conversation we just had, uh, not too long ago at the special meeting regarding the local project. As the council is aware, uh, we received three bids, all higher than the engineer's estimate at the time. Uh, we did some reconnaissance with the contractors to understand, uh, why that was the case. And we presented that information to the council and, um, provided a couple, or four options to consider. Uh, the council decided to go with, um, splitting the local project up into a street improvement component and the utility component, and going ahead and rebidding here, uh, in April uh, with the hope of garnering more interest, especially for the street improvement, uh, component and, and creating some more competition there and hopefully lowering the costs. Um, and so that's what we're proceeding with right now. This, the plans and specifications have been split. We've, uh, as the mayor alluded to, already done one advertisement two days ago in the local paper and the Finance and Commerce. And we'll do one more advertisement, um, next Saturday. Just, uh, and that provides the description of the project and a summary of the work to take place. And so that allows contractors to, um, take a look at it before the plans are actually uploaded and available for viewing. They can get this project on their radar and see based on the high-level quantities if it's something they're interested in. Um, so, uh, we've got the, on your, on the second page there of the agenda item, the fiscal impact. And you'll see in the first column is what we received from the low bidder on the twenty-twenty, uh, one local project when it was one project and, uh, what our updated engineer's estimate is. And, um, we didn't want to cause confusion here with this, so I apologize in advance. If that's the case, I'll do my best to describe, um, how our engineer's estimate was put together. Um, essentially, uh, we couldn't provide, provide this detailed of an engineer's estimate at our special meeting. We first had to kind of split the project up and look at how the quantities were going to, uh, be affected. And, and for the most part, um, that doesn't change the quantities much. But to the act of actually splitting the project up, we just wanted to get through that component first before putting an estimate together. And then we, we always take the most recent information we have. And that was our conversations with the contractors, uh, reviewing the three bids that we did receive. For, you know, line by line, what did they bid on the project? What was the average cost for bituminous, for instance? What was the average cost for curbing gutter, for instance? And so we, we tweaked our estimate based on that information, as well as market information, as we talked at length about at the special meeting, what's going on in the market with materials. Um, the, the resin plants in Texas, the pipe prices on plastic, so on and so forth. And so, uh, we took our, um, we, we put our best effort forth to do an updated engineer's estimate. And what I had mentioned, um, you know, as we talked about this to staff internally is, you know, the engineer's estimate is important for budgeting. At this point, what's important is what, what we get for bids here in April. And so, you know, we're very hopeful that we're generating more interest from the street contractors, the paving contractors, and that we can lower the price on schedule A there, the surface improvements. And hopefully more so as well on schedule D. Those are the, uh, those are the improvements that are assessable costs and, um, gathering from the council. And of course, city staff, we want to, um, try to stay as close to that, that preliminary assessment figure we provided to residents, knowing that, um, you know, we, we aren't, aren't always able to do that, but that was the hope here with this. And so that's what we're trying to reflect. Um, there's some other schedules that we're really not anticipating much of a change with. Um, you know, we got pretty average costs on the, on the trail improvements and, and the pond maintenance. You know, the low bidder actually had a really good cost, whereas the other two, uh, bidders had a little bit higher costs. And so we wanted to reflect that. We just did not feel that it would, uh, be doing any service for the council if, if we had a lower engineer's estimate again at this point, um, knowing, having the information we have. So, um, I, of course, these are construction costs in the table. There's computing the project costs, obviously includes the contingency and the indirects. But really for the, the conversation tonight, wanted to look at the construction costs. That's what we'll be looking at when we open the bids. So the bid opening for the street project is scheduled for April twenty-eighth. And we'll turn around the results very quickly, um, and have that ready for consideration at the first meeting in May. So I'll take any questions from council on this project.
Thank you, Mr.
Hello? Well, are you still there? We, I think you got cut off.
We lost you, Lisa.
Lisa, we don't hear you.
Um, well, I've got a question for Adam.
Sure. I think she might still be talking.
So when I add up the two A twenty-one and then the four twenty-one, it comes out to be the two-point-six. So you're still estimating that it's going to cost the same as what the low bid was, correct? You're just hoping that the sur- schedule A is going to come less and then the, um,
Yeah, so.
The other one is going to be.
Did, sorry, you, you, you're adding up the cost from, um, the utility component, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, I put them both together.
Yeah, we'll jump to that one and I'll get further into that or then, or I can do it now. But we're, with, we're really seeing big variations in pipe prices at this point. And, uh, we're seeing that contractors may be having trouble even procuring material. Um, and so at this point, the pipe prices, we're trying to reflect that in the updated estimate. Um, we're projecting the savings here on the street project, which again, I, I think is important from a assessment standpoint and, and the, from the resident standpoint, of course. You know, we really hope that we get a lot of interest on these projects now that they're split up and that the engineer's estimate isn't the low. We, we really want to strive to be in the middle. Um, with our engineer's estimate, we don't want to be the low. So, yeah, i- if you add them up, it's very close to what the low bid was overall. I think it's still under by fifty, fifty or sixty thousand. But again, what I'm trying to stress is that, you know, at this point, the project's designed, we're splitting up. We're going to put it out there. We're going to see what the, the bidders and what the market says is, is the cost for these projects. But we are doing our best to kind of keep, keep tabs on what those costs might be or what we're estimating those to be.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, um, if there are no more questions or comments, then, um, do I have a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorize for bid the twenty-twenty-one local street improvement projects?
This is John, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperlin. Is there a second?
This is Ann.
I'll second that. Oh, go ahead, Ann.
Okay, uh, thanks, Ann. I think you, you beat Pam, so Ms. McGregor made that second. Any further discussion? Hearing none then, the council will, all, um, in favor signify with aye. I will vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
Mr. Chumperlin?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Motion passes five oh, so we'll move on to resolution, um, to approve the plans and specifications and authorize for bid the twenty-twenty-one utility improvement project. Do we need any more discussion on that?
Um, only if the council has questions about why we're projecting a cost increase, I could speak to that. I, I guess I'll just give my, uh, two minutes on that right now.
Sure.
The utility project obviously has to precede the street improvement project. And there is some minor additional work that's going to go along with that. And the best example I can provide is, um, the, the removals necessary to complete the underground utility work. Whereas before, um, those were incorporated into the overall cost of reclaiming the street. Um, you know, now that, that material's going to have to be saw-cut, removed, you know, with a bobcat or with a backhoe piled and disposed of off-site, um, through that contract, because it can't be something that the, you know, the street contractor has to deal with. And so there's just some added components. And then also, you know, we, we're, we're going to see the pipe prices definitely higher than we originally estimated. Hopefully not too much higher than what some of the bids came back at. Um, just, just again, with what we've been hearing for materials. And also the lift station, we, we increased slightly. Um, we did have with the original bidder, a, a fairly good price on the lift station. And, uh, we might see that go up, uh, because again, there's going to be additional removals there. Um, it's, uh, you know, all the traffic com- control components are, are applied to just the utility can, project now instead of the project, uh, street project as a whole. So that's why you see that estimate slightly higher.
Thank you, Mr. Gebbois. Council, any questions?
Yeah, this is Ann, I have one. I, I, I just, I, I, and again, I'm not against what it is, where you're going, what you're doing. I understand it totally, but, um, are you now saying that instead of, I mean, we, it was something four-hundred, over four-hundred thousand, um, overbid, and now we're backing out of that slowly but surely? And you think we're only going to save fifty to sixty thousand? Is that what you're saying?
That's what the engineer's estimate is showing right now. And, you know, with, if we can circle back to the special meeting, when we talked through the four options and the second one that was chosen was to split it up and rebid. You know, we did our best to provide the cons there, and some of the cons were your, your material prices for everything might change over the course of a month and a half. And, um, you're, you're slightly compressing the construction schedule, which may increase costs. And, uh, and so we're trying to reflect that in the estimate with, again, the hope that we're not the low bidder with the estimate. We, we want the low bidder to be lower than our estimate. Um, but we're trying to also factor in those cons that we talked about back at the special meeting.
Okay, the savings is a savings. All right.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Thank you.
Okay. Adam, this is Kathleen. I have a question. So for the lift station, you guys are estimating the four-hundred. Is that reasonably accurate? Because the three bids we got, one was five forty, one was five twenty, and then the low one was three ninety. So is it really logic, do we really think it's going to come in either at the three ninety again? Or are we just estimating low in the hopes that it does?
So for the lift station.
The others were over five hundred.
Yes, that's quite true. We had a really good low bid on the lift station. Um, we spoke with, back when we were planning or preparing the special meeting memo item, we spoke with the, um, the low bidder and asked if they were going to bid again. And, and we kind of got a maybe. Um, and so there's a chance that they bid again and have a similar price. And so that's where the lift station estimate's at. Um, the lift station itself is, you know, it's, uh, uh, we haven't really heard that those components are fluctuating very much in materials. There's no plastic piping in there. It's all ductile and then it's the lift station component. So, yeah, I think we're being optimistic there with, uh, with our estimate on the lift station itself.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, John or Pam, any questions or comments?
I just have one real quick, uh, I just have one real quick comment. Um, because we are looking at splitting this out, um, communication is going to be really, really key. So Adam, how involved is WSB making sure that all these moving parts with all these different companies now, um, are, is going to happen as we need them to happen?
Yeah, that's going to be a, a big component, as you mentioned. Um, we've tailored the specifications in the contracts. And, you know, we're hoping that, that, that a contractor for a particular contract doesn't see that as detrimental. We don't think that they will, but we've, we've tailored language in there for access. You know, the street contractor is going to want to get in on Minneapolis Avenue and do some prep work and perhaps even start with some storm sewer work down on the west end of Minneapolis while, uh, the lift station's still being, uh, constructed. The lift station's going to take a while and, um, vice versa. There might be, the, the utilities contractor might have kind of completed the force mains over in hardscrabble, but they have to go work on, you know, some restoration or, uh, an issue crops up and they need access to the site. But, uh, the street contractor is there and they're working away and they don't want to deal with it. So we've, we've tried to put language into the contract to allow for that coordination. Um, and, you know, that's going to be, uh, obviously a big component of the pre-construction meeting for both contractors, is talking about the other contractor's schedule. And, um, you know, perhaps even overlapping the weekly progress meetings that we always have with the contractors. But, you know, either get them to overlap, uh, by thirty minutes or fifteen minutes, so there can be some direct coordination between the two contractors. It's going to be, uh, a challenge and, um, but it's not to say that type of stuff doesn't happen where we've got maybe a private utility working on updating their gas main right before the street contractor and they hang out a little longer. So we, we've experienced those coordination efforts. And, uh, it, it's going to be a significant component if these two projects go forward.
Okay, well, we just want to stress that that we need to have, um, WSB very involved in all that communication.
Yeah, we, we want to see, you know, a very successful project, obviously. We always do, and I think we've had success. And, uh, this one, you know, as we've talked about over and over at many meetings, is, it, this is where we're at with this one. And, uh, we're really hoping we get good results here. And, and we're definitely going to talk about that at the first meeting in May and, and, and we'll see what the council's decision is. But then if they do go forward, you know, we, we're very committed to the success of both these projects, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Pam. Um, Mr. Chumperlin, anything?
Nope, answered all the questions. I agree, the coordinating is going to be very crucial, being we had to split this. But I have confidence that WSB can handle that.
Yeah, it, it will be, especially since we did have some residents, particularly on Loring, that were concerned about how disruptive it would be. Now on Loring, they don't have, I don't believe that there's any utility work on Loring. Is that correct, Adam?
Yeah, that's correct. We did, in, in developing the switch, had it, had to include that outlet in the street project. So that, that's not part of the utility project, the outlet.
Okay, so hopefully the Stonebridge and Loring projects will, will move ahead, um, flawlessly, seamlessly. And the only glitches you'll be able to iron out on, um, Minneapolis and hardscrabble, so. All right, um, all right, so, uh, do I have a motion then to approve the plans and specifications and authorize for bid the twenty-twenty-one utility improvement projects?
This is Ann, so moved.
Thank you, Ann. Is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
All right, and John seconded that. Then all those in favor will signify with aye. Ann?
Aye.
And Kathleen?
Aye.
And Pam?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Motion passes five oh. So we'll look forward to the bid opening on the twenty-eighth. And bringing this back to the council, um, at our May fifth, is it May fifth meeting? All right.
Third.
Third, thank you. All right. And just, um, I think in one sense, it's good. I mean, it's, it'll be easier for the council anyway to see the difference. I mean, it's, it'll be easier for the council anyway to see the difference between the utilities, which we don't special assess, and then the cost of the roads and stormwater. So that might be a little easier to see. But let's hope for the best here. All right. Next, we have our approve our labor agreement for the 21 through 23, LES Local 116 Police Officers Union. This is something the Personnel Committee has been working on for a number of months. So we're glad to be able to present it to the council. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Palfos.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The existing police officers' labor agreement, LES 116, expired in December of 2020, but terms of this contract remain in effect until a new labor agreement is reached. As Madam Mayor stated, the Personnel Committee recommends the approval of a new three-year labor agreement. In your packet, you'll see the redline version for your review. The union has approved this redline version, and if approved by the city council, a full agreement will be executed with the union. So I'm just kind of, going to kind of run through all these changes and answer questions at the end. Beginning cover page in Article 1, obviously, the new dates of the agreement. Article 13.01 for 2020, the dollar amounts of $900 for employee-only coverage and $1,300 for family coverage were approved in an MOU in 2019. These previous changes approved by the city council are now included in this agreement. There will be an insurance re-opener for 2022 and 2023 to negotiate this provision. Article 15.3 relates to sick leave. We just have an addition of that language to align with other union contracts. Article 15.3B, again, this relates to sick leave severance. The sick pay schedule was, again, changed and approved via MOU in 2019 and are now being included. Article 15.3D, this section relates to severance benefits. Qualifying eligible employees will contribute all severance benefits to a post-employment health savings plan. They also wish to include $25 per paycheck. This plan only affects employees when they leave, and this inclusion does not have any extra cost to the city except for the administrative work to set it all up. Article 17.1 relates to vacation accrual. Again, the vacation schedule was approved by the city council in 2019 and now being included in this agreement. Article 17.2 relates to vacation carryover. Officers may carry over 160 hours of vacation time into the next calendar year. Again, approved in that MOU in 2019 and being included. Article 21, wages. This section relates to base wage increases and longevity pay increases. So in 2021, police officers will receive a 3% base wage increase. In addition, they will receive longevity pay in increments of five, 10, 15 years. 4% increase after five years of employment, 4% after 10 years, and 4% after 15 years. In 2022, police officers will receive a 2.75% base wage increase with the longevity at 4% at five years, 4% after 10 years, and 5% of longevity pay after 15 years. In 2023, police officers will receive a 2.75% base wage increase in addition to the 4% longevity pay after five years, 4% after 10, and 5% after 15 years. In total, this amounts to a five, or sorry, 8.5% base wage increase over the three-year labor agreement. Longevity page, pay will now begin at level five instead of level six after 10 years. Article 21.2, the section relates to differential pay. These assignments were compensated in the previous labor agreement, and the $1.50 amount from 2020 has not changed and will remain for the three years of the agreement. Article 21.6 relates to using and accruing comp time throughout the year. Officers may now bank up to 60 hours of comp time instead of the 40 hours in the previous contract. They may never exceed 60 hours throughout the year and can only carry over a maximum of 480 hours into the next year. In addition, holiday pay may now be banked into the comp bank in lieu of being paid out for the holiday. This just provides officers with flexibility. It is not at additional cost to the city. Again, Article 24 is just a change in the effective dates of the agreement. I don't know, Mike, if you wanted to add anything else? Otherwise, I think we're both happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, Ms. Palfos, I don't have anything to add. You did a good job in the description, but we'll be happy to, as you stated, answer any questions that may come up.
Thank you, Ms. Palfos and Mr. Broney. So council, questions? I'll start with, well, Pam and I were in, involved in the, in all of the discussions and so on, so I'm assuming we don't have any questions. So I'll move to Kathleen. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you. And Ann?
Oh, just an information question. Do police people get personal days?
Mayor and council, personal days aren't something that any city employee has. What we do have are vacation days, sick leave days. So, you know, the, the, the nomenclature they use, that's generally referred to as a one bucket system, where it's sick and vacation all dumped into one bucket called personal leave. Here, we have maintained the two separate buckets of vacation and sick leave. So, no, they don't have personal days, but they do have vacation and they do have sick leave.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. And John, any questions?
No questions.
All right. With that then, is there a motion to approve the labor agreement for the 21 through the 23 with the LES, LES Local Number 116 Police Officers Union?
This is Kathleen, so moved.
Thank you, Kathleen. Is there a second?
This is Ann, I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. And there, Ann made that second. All those in favor will signify with aye. We'll start with Ann.
Aye.
And Kathleen?
Aye.
And Pam?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes, 5-0. So that concludes our business items, and we'll move on to administrative items. Mr. Broney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Just three items for, to report on tonight. Our next meeting is Monday, April 19th, two weeks from tonight. As you just saw, we did finish our labor agreement and just approved it with our police officers. We are now moving on to negotiations with our police supervisors. We actually have our first negotiation session scheduled for this Wednesday, and we will be discussing our strategy for that session with a Personnel Committee meeting, which will take place tomorrow. And then also, coming up on my calendar and, I think Brian's calendar as well, we're going to have our first meeting of the year for our Southwest Water Tower Progress Meeting. We pretty much put that on hiatus for the winter, but we're, we're picking that up yet this week. And, and there should be some activity out there in the next few weeks. I do know that they're finished assembling the bowl that took place at their plant, I believe it's Indiana or Tennessee, one of those two cities. We did have SEH, who's overseeing this project, that one, somebody from their engineering firm, spent the entire week down in that neck of the woods, supervising and watching the construction of the bowl. And they will be shipping that up here in the next few weeks in pieces, and then they'll go to work on assembling that together. So we should sit the, some activity at the site here in the next few weeks. And with that, Mayor, that's all the items that I have.
Thank you. Are there any other staff reports then, Mr. Broney?
I don't believe so unless somebody's decided to chime in, but I don't think so unless somebody has something for an upcoming meeting. I don't know, David, if you have anything or?
I'm, I'm wondering, David?
Yep, there will be, there will be a Planning Commission meeting on April 26. I do know that, do know that with certainty, so I do need a council liaison to volunteer for that, that meeting. We do not have a, any items scheduled for an upcoming Park Commission meeting.
Okay. Is anybody that hasn't served yet on, as the liaison, interested in doing so?
I can tell when I can do it.
Okay, hold on. We have Pam and Kathleen. Which one?
It doesn't matter to me either way.
It doesn't matter to me if Pam wants to do it. That's fine.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna put Pam on it then. So Pam, you're the liaison.
It's 7 o'clock, right? Okay, 26, got it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You know it's going to be heat that night, Pam, so.
What's that?
It's going to be 80 degrees and a beautiful night that night, and you'll be at this meeting, so.
Well, thanks. I'm going to call Kathleen till I'm sick.
That's fine. I'll just be sitting outside on my phone.
Kathleen without your phone, right? All right. Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to council reports. So I, just a couple minor things. So on March 18th, I did participate in the League of Women Voters Mayor's Forum. They have kind of like a lake area forum for some of the communities around the lake. It consisted of the mayor from Greenwood, from Excelsior, Deep Haven, Tonka Bay, myself, and I know I'm missing one other one. Oh, Shorewood and Shorewood. And some of the mayors were new and some were older or, how do you say, experienced. And we had a nice forum. It is, I believe, posted on our website if you're interested in watching it. It's about an hour and a half. So, and, yeah, some good information and just good to connect with other mayors in the community, in the area, to find out what they're doing and what they're up to. And then also, of course, Pam and I have both been participating in the Personnel Committees, and we will do so tomorrow as well. That's all I have for now. I'll pass it on to Pam.
Well, let's see. I attended the Mount Westonka Community and Commerce that we haven't been able to have for over a year, so it's really nice seeing everybody again. They had a few main speakers, which was really interesting. They had one, two people actually via Zoom on, from Hennessy County's Open to Business. And this is an organization that helps small businesses with relief grants, and there is no more grants available at this time, but perhaps in the future. And people can sign up if they're interested in getting newsletters to get updates. And then there was an update on the Tanagers Bridge reconstruction, which everybody is probably very interested in just because it is a major bridge. And I, if I can read my notes here, this bridge is being done because it was end of the life, and the work began in 2018, and they are constructing a whole new bridge. And the process is really interesting. They're building the new bridge next to the existing bridge. So that will limit the road closures, which is really nice. There will only be 60 days in the spring that they're planning for closure, and then 30 in the fall. And the new bridge will be straighter and a foot and a, one and a half feet higher. The project started on 3/8/21, runs through October of 21, and the detour is not good. It's wrong. So we want the bridge to be done very quickly. So they're working on it. Then they had a tribute to the Minnetonka Drive-In, um, Drive-In, um, Drive-In Restaurant, I guess you'd call it. They've been in business for 60 years. And Paul, they made a shout out to all the police officers that have been very-
Whoops. Somebody. Okay.
Well, anyways, they made a shout out to thank all the police officers in Minnetrista and Orno for all the help that they have done in all those 60 years of their business. And what else? The Polar Plunge raised over $90,000. They had 260 plungers, and Dog Days is scheduled to happen again, and there will be more information coming out on that soon. That's it.
Thank you, Pam. Yeah, lots going on now that, it's been a while, right? All right. Mr. Trumperlin, anything from Pioneer Sarah?
Yes, attended the meeting, monthly meeting on March 18th. On the agenda, something that touches on Minnetrista, we, Commission approved the 2021 stream and lake monitoring contract with Three River Parks. Because of our, kind of trying to get Pioneer Sarah Creek invested more, expand our capabilities, investments, we, in the fourth gen, we said we were going to up how many streams and how many lakes were being monitored on a yearly basis. So we've increased the number of lakes by a couple. So our contract, of course, obviously went up accordingly as well. As far as Minnetrista, we have, didn't change anything. Our South Whale Tail and North Whale Tail have been monitored for a number of years. We do not do monitoring, at least this year, on Little Long Lake, and that, that's still maintaining its absolute pristine water as it's fed there with underground streams and hasn't been polluted yet. And North and South Whale Tail, for those who don't know or look at, is two separate lakes just because they are quite different in how they're defined. The North Whale Tail is shallow, probably six to nine feet at the most, mud bottom, whereas South Whale Tail is 26 feet deep, more of a rock or crushed rock, sand with mud around the perimeter. So they're, they're treated differently. There will be bi-weekly monitoring done by Three River Parks, and they're looking there for obviously pollution, what the total daily maximal load are. So they, they take water samples from down deep and send them to the lab for testing. And as you may be aware, South Whale Tail is on the agenda for LM treatment, but that's been moved back, probably won't even be on the 2022 agenda, but we'll see. The other thing is, well, budgeting for 2022 will be coming up shortly. I would assume I'll hear something on that, probably before the end of April, and that we typically try to get the budget done. So the cities involved can get their assessment sometime in June and put it into their calculations for 2022. Last year, actually, our assessment in Minnetrista dropped a little bit. Hard to tell how that'll go. And as most people know, how our assessments are arrived at are based on fair market value of all the properties in all six cities that are in the Pioneer Sarah Creek watershed. And then each city is divided into the total to arrive out, arrive at their percentage of our total CIP that we're building in. We've kept our CIP numbers steady here, but we may see them increase as, again, Pioneer Sarah Creek is looking to be a little bit more involved in projects. So that's what we've got right now on, on Pioneer Sarah Creek.
Thank you, John. Ann, anything on the Gillespie Center?
No, no, they, they seem to be doing their meetings every other month, so I won't have one this month.
Okay. One of the things I wanted to make sure, Mr. Broney, Mike, you might have to check on this. Can you please make sure that St. Bonnie has Ann's contact information for the Fire Advisory Committee? I know in the past, there's been some issues getting the information out to the representative, and I know they only meet, what, twice a year? And I just want to make sure that they have her contact information, and that maybe they even give her a heads up as to when that is.
I will check into that and get back to you both on that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Kathleen, anything?
No, nothing to report.
When is the next fire commission meeting? That's coming up sometime in April, right?
Yep, April 21st. As of now, I believe they're planning on in person, but I should know by the 19th meeting for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. That concludes all of our agenda items. And at this time, I'm going to ask all of those who are not in the closed session to please remove yourselves because this is a closed session.
So the people attending the closed session will be the five members of council. So the people attending the closed session will be the five members of council, Ally Pofus, Brian Grimm, and myself, and Chris Linkwurst.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, there should be a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you very much. I was waiting. All right, so is there a motion to go into closed session? Oh, wait, hold on just a second. I I just have one question. Are we closing the regular meeting and then going into closed session? Or are we going to have to come back to the regular meeting?
Madam Mayor, I think you should not close the regular meeting. I think you should have a motion to go into closed session. Do that, come back into your regular meeting, conclude anything else you need to do, and then adjourn from the regular meeting after the closed session.
I agree.
Okay, all right, thank you then. So do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Ann. Is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
Thank you, John. A motion has been made to go into closed session. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Ann McGregor?
Aye.
Kathleen Revkin?
Aye.
And Pam Mortensen?
Aye.
John Trumperlin?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, we are in closed session now. So we are now back in open session at our regular meeting, and it is 8:24. We had a closed session to dis, the council did, to discuss the performance review for City Administrator Mike Baroni. And the council approved the recommendation that was made by the Personnel Committee to, for his salary adjustment, which included a COLA and a market adjustment. It was a 5-0 vote. And do we need anything else, Chris?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So with that, that does conclude all of our business items for the evening. If we have a motion to adjourn, we can then adjourn.
This is Pam, so moved.
Thank you, Pam. Is there a second?
This is Kathleen, I'll second.
Thank you, Kathleen. A motion has been made by Pam and seconded by Kathleen to adjourn. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye. Ann?
Aye.
And Kathleen?
Aye.
And Pam?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great two weeks.